I'm gonna welcome you all, ladies and gentlemen, to the sheriff's court. It's roll call now, the general judge Long doesn't like roll call, you'll see. Not sure where David is, I know the judge let me know he wasn't gonna be here today. Pete's here, Shelby's here, I'm here, Judge Proton's sorting this judge today. Okay, we'll find out where Davidson, I'm sorry, he didn't tell me those words, maybe he's just running too quick. Maybe I'll get... Give us a little break, if we find out where he's at. Can you hear?
He's gone.
He's gone?
Yeah.
Made it all back there. He didn't want that for anything.
Look, please, he's... There we go.
Moving along to Island number... Open in prayer, please stand and then keep placed at the section.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all our blessings. We have many blessings in Corners County, along with our problem. We ask that you be with us today if we make decisions for the county and take care of county business. We ask you to keep people safe on the highway. Reparies on the highway are ongoing, I hear lots of complaints about them, but please be patient and drive safely. In Jesus' name we pray.
That I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The green on the next?
They're not available, no.
They're not available?
No.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. Moving along to Island number... I'm sorry, is there any citizens to give her now or during the agenda item?
We do have a, I'm sorry if I mis-said your name, Shane Hall? Shannon Hall, sorry about that.
Okay, I was like, ooh!
Sorry!
So the agenda item, okay. Any barriers?
Yeah, that's you.
Okay, Island number seven. Inspect, accept, reject bids for the inmate commissary service to be used at the new Corners County Jail. Members will be required to furnish necessary equipment to be placed in the facility in order for jail staff to place and receive commissary orders as set forth by the Texas Commission on Jail Standards. Sheriff?
Good morning.
Please, Kevin. Those are what's in the box, James.
These are the two?
Yes.
Wanting not to lose my glasses. Stress relief? So you're gonna be all the same though, or just one for everyone?
I would imagine.
One of the, one of the bids that we have is from Keith, that how you pronounce it? Ke- Keith?
K- Keith. It's Keith, yeah.
Guys, do you wanna go through them or let the sheriff and the chief?
Yeah, we can fix them up.
Right, that's right, exactly, 'cause y'all know which I'm referring to.
Trinity, Trinity.
Yeah.
Trinity should be one and Keith the other.
Okay, that one, that one is Trinity Service Group.
Is your basic price on it?
Excuse me?
Is your basic price on it?
I'll look at it right now.
There's a CD with the, they're coming in.
Sheriff, do you have one bigger?
Be on page twenty-seven. Financial proposal.
Say David, twenty-seven?
Point seven.
Commision rate on that sale is fifteen percent. That is right.
To answer, to answer my own question, these are unit prices, they have to be evaluated quite detailed by the sheriff department, where he's making the decision. So we can't give any charity.
Tab three, measure information.
And this one's twenty percent on all adjusted gross sales. Do you have one of each, right?
One each.
Okay, is that all you need, one of each? Okay, is it? You wanna come back to that agenda item, what do y'all need?
Correct, yeah.
We have three more on, we got three more on, then we'll come back.
Okay, you wanna keep going on the one you got right now? Moving along to Island number eight. Island number seven, they're gonna take about ten, fifteen minutes. Inspect, accept, reject bids to sell two patrol cars that were replaced with new vehicles. Both vehicles are in poor mechanical condition. One of the 2009 Ford Crown Victoria and the other is a 2010 Ford Crown Victoria.
These are two vehicles that we wanted to auction off.
That's previously been declared so.
Yeah, the last one. One bid on the 2009 Crown Victoria for Mark Alvarez, seven hundred and fifty. You got two here, right? There, you only, you only bid on that one. On the 2009 Ford Crown Victoria, three hundred and fifty-one dollars. Lee Garcia, junior. So I guess nobody bid on the 2010 Ford. Guys?
The one bid, the Mark Alvarez.
It would be better to go with the seven fifty bids, you know, twice the dollar.
What was the condition of the two vehicles, Sheriff? I know that was a fishy.
They had over like a hundred and fifty thousand. And they were both fourth edition, I mean, they weren't even worth anything.
But they are still running?
Yes.
One of them was.
The other one is, the other one's bad.
Is the one that's running, the one that got pissed?
Correct.
Higher motion?
Move that we accept the half bid on the vehicle.
Motion to me. Seconded, all the favors are, uh, motion passes. Island number nine. Acknowledgement received the donation from Marathon Oil Company in the amount of twenty-five hundred to be directed to the Corners County Sheriff's Department. For Sheriff Lane Geto to spend that department discretion, Sheriff.
Back in November, Marathon made contact with us and we didn't appreciate our donation for the sheriff's office. And at that time, when we met with them at the dinner, they also brought to our attention that they were gonna give us a money donation. And weeks after that, couple of weeks after we met, they mailed us a check worth two thousand five hundred. I just bring it to y'all since it's...
I did.
Any comments?
Yes, I did have a discussion with the sheriff. And told him that, that we'd like to report what expenses he's donated, run as far as. Some people ask him when he gets a donation, what's spent, and he said he will. And it goes to a separate account. And then he will make a report at some time of what he's spent.
What accounts is going to go on?
It's a special donations account that is set up specifically for the sheriff's department.
He doesn't have a thousand dollars in the account.
What we'll do is, every month we'll report whatever we purchase with it.
Okay. But we thank Marathon for that.
And that's the second one, Commissioner, that they donated this year or something. The other one, we've previously reported the same amount, so.
That's great. Island number ten. Acknowledged, received a donation from the St. Cornelius Catholic Church after society in Ramona of fifty dollars to be directed to the Corners County EMS Department for administrator. Dennis Kelly, to spend the department's discretion, Sheriff.
Um, over the past few months, we have, we've been meeting with different various groups. They want us to come and give a little class about what's going on with EMS and changes that are made and, you know, safety type stuff, fall prevention, things of that nature. And the altar society at St. Cornelius Church, we went there and gave them a little thirty or forty-five minute presentation. And they, they were gracious enough to donate us fifty dollars to be used. We haven't the slightest idea what we're gonna use it on yet. Probably some new updated training materials for our guys. We've been doing a lot of training here lately to try to keep up with the ever-changing landscape around here. And so, you know, we would really, really like to thank those folks over there for forgiveness this donation.
Dennis, do you have, do you have a fund similar to what Pete asked about? Or do you get that many donations?
This is the first donation I've gotten since I've been here, so.
We are going to establish a fund specifically for...
Yeah, we're, I'm assuming we're gonna do it the exact same way. I think that would make, make things easier across the board, so.
We wanna know what you spent that.
Sir, yeah. I hope so.
May I ask, may I ask, Commissioner, speak up a little bit, 'cause I'm not here anymore, give me a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sheriff, not a problem, sir. Is that the last one, Dennis?
I did.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Moving to Island number eleven. Discuss act on amended the sheriff's department budget for fun prisoner detention for an additional hundred and fifty days until the jail is completed. To be reimbursed with funds recovered through the jail contract, Sheriff.
I, I just wanted to bring to the commissioners' attention, I know some time back when we funded for prisoner transports and housing on out of counties. To January, and I know we're in the January, and we're, we're still waiting to, you know, for the completion of the jail. And what I'm asking is, do I need to put this, all the agenda items, money to get there? I know we have monies to the side, but I'm just bringing it to y'all's attention since, you know, we budgeted just to work till January. So, you know, fly out, so we can all be on the same page.
Well, I think the contract, Jeff is here, but I think he was something already built into that contract for something to, way for it to be handled, is that right, Jim?
As far as reimbursement?
Yes, yeah, we have, we have liquidated damages in the contract to account for the reimbursement for housing prisoners. And we also have built into the contract other items for reimbursement for other costs that may be separate with respect to extension of time. And for this agenda item and for the one that we're gonna discuss in a little while, it would seem the easiest thing to do would be for the court to authorize the extension of this detention of prisoners until such time that the jail is completed, which right now we're projecting to be the middle, end of March or April. And so you don't need to put it on every agenda, or put it on an agenda each month. You can just authorize it to go forward until you're done with the project. And at that time, we will meet again to discuss the reimbursement from the contractor.
How long does it take for reimbursement?
Well, we have the money and retain it, so it's just a matter of getting it to reach the appropriate accounting.
I mean, what do you estimate to be a monthly cost for additional fees that, you know, per year out of county detention or whatever, about thirty-two thousand?
So Shelby, the commissioner's been running about fifteen to twenty thousand, because we have most of the prisoners at G O. So this includes the females, the females, and all of that stuff. So it's been averaging about fifteen, and I could probably tell you, but last one, we're keeping track, it's about fifteen to eighteen thousand a month.
So it, what have been, y'all need eighty thousand, sixty-eight hundred, six thousand?
Well, if you figure the five months that we put in an item, it's basically seventy-five thousand, but it may not go that far, as Jeff said, it may just go through March.
Right.
So.
Well, we, as Jeff said, we're not gonna amend each month. Once we finish and occupy the jail, then we'll do the budget amendment.
So just go ahead, just...
Once we know whatever is not gonna be covered by the liquidation funds, then the...
So how's it gonna be getting paid now, to one of those line items?
It'll continue to be paid through the sheriff's department line item as it is now. There's adequate funds in his total department budget.
Right, that's what I'm saying, then we'll just put it back into, okay, where we took it off of? Okay.
Are you gonna, is calculating the manpower hours and stuff in it also?
It's just the housing. It's like, and stuff like that.
At the time, if Jeff does the man letters and accompany, we'll have to figure that in there as far as the incidentals compared to the actual housing. Because you have man hours and vehicle expense and all that other stuff.
Mileage.
Mileage.
Time to warm, get them up, take them to the doctors, stuff, all that stuff. He's prepared to keep the very detail low.
As I see, we don't have to act amended the budget now, just stay as it is and then we'll come back and replenish your budget.
I think what is it, Wayne, wanting approval not to have to come back and...
Yeah, that too, I guess, the court session.
Yeah, we won't have to.
This does require a motion and action, is that correct?
Well, if you don't have, if you already got, if you already have approved budget and you're using funds from that approved budget, then at this point, I don't think you need to take any action.
We're not amended the budget.
We're not amended the budget. And he already has, the sheriff's department already has the authorization to house the prisoners where they're being housed, just a continuation of what has been previously authorized. And this is essentially an update as to the status. And then once we are, as we, as y'all said, once we're done with the project, we will allocate the reimbursed funds to the sheriff's budget by amendment. Once we get to probably April or if, once the project is completely closed out, and I'm looking at, probably May or June for that, because right now the projection is substantial completion in March, that's what the contractor told us. We're looking at the job and we probably, at least in this room, think it's gonna be more like April. And then that's when you can start using the jail. Then you have punch lists and closeout, which is gonna take probably thirty days from that point in time. And that, at the end of that process, is when we'll negotiate for the final reimbursement. Once we know what that number is, then you can come back and amend the sheriff's budget to put that money back into the sheriff's department.
Any comments, Sheriff? No. We're gonna move along to Island number twelve. Discuss, consider act to assign duties as risk manager to emergency management coordinator, Suzanne Coliva and perfecting Corners County Risk Manager for Corners County, coordinate safety training. Shelby?
I was talking with Judge Long the other day and didn't know that Suzanne Coliva is currently in a senior certification for, certified health safety person. And with all that's going on in the county and stuff, I... Judge Butler, we talked about this as well, assigning her the duties. She's got time to do that, she, as says, she will be valued to accept the responsibilities. It would be pleased, maybe coordinate schedules and training for all department employees, document the training for current employees, and especially the new hired employees, make sure they get the proper safety training and stuff like that, and maintain all the records. You know, employees need to, at least elected officials and department heads for sure need to have the announcements and the management safety training. And, which is online, and she's been coordinating some of that training already within the county. We just need to get everybody on board. And I think elected officials have like ninety days or something like that too, to, upon they get elected to do, to complete that, that type of training. But this really affects a lot of stuff with state grants and, and TAC has made some recommendations from, on their, from what they've come and expected, like they want us to have vaccine prevention plan and some other stuff that we don't have. Karen Levi is the risk manager officer and plus, you know, I think too, she could maybe monitor some of the workmanship issues and stuff like that. I think her move, had those duties being assigned, I heard it makes it a lot, well, be more responsible in training their employees as well as monitoring their safety needs.
You keep referring to safety training. What kind of safety training are you talking about? I mean, it sounds, you know, important, but can you give me a definition of that? Like, the auditor's office, what kind of safety training would they need?
Well, if you wanna look at it, it sounds crazy maybe, but there's a lot, there are a lot of accidents that happen inside the offices, from people getting cut, bumping file cabinets and stuff. You may think it's funny, but it's not.
It is funny, it is funny.
Can I add to that?
It really is.
It really is, to you.
Right.
Some of the things that, some of the things that we had done was shooter, active shooter safety training, if there was a threat within the building, things like that, what we needed to do to not panic. That was some of the safety trains within the office. Those are all free trains that TAC did. They came in and took about an hour of our time to do it. It's just making you aware of your surroundings. You know, a lot of people, it's unfortunate, it happens in this, in the United States. People get in, they just run, ex-spouses come in and shoot the former spouse. And we, there were just some concerns with some of the staff that they didn't know what to do. And that was some of the trains that we had, it just...
Bomb threats?
Bomb threats, things like that.
Mr. Aron, you got it?
Yes, uh, this job, the emergency management coordinator, it's gone from fifteen thousand dollar a year part-time job to now thirty-five plus thousand dollar a year full-time job. Nobody really is quite sure what Ms. Coliva, is that correct?
Right.
Uh, what she does. Has anybody, and I know Shelby is a great patron of the job description and, you know, help and even resource him. Has a job description even been prepared for this decision? I don't think so. If it had, I'd not hurt him.
Well, there's, there's one there.
I can't tell you what Gilupka did when he was here. Nobody knows. And now we're trying to create a, basically, another empire within the county.
It's not a empire, it's assigning duties from one person to another. The duties are already there. We just...
Is Ms. Coliva, is she prepared or is she educated or trained in anything regarding emergency management or management or anything else?
You're taking an elementary school teacher and trying to make an emergency management coordinator out of it. It's ridiculous. She has no accountability. No one knows where she is. She's not in anything else. Now, I like Suzanne, I'm not, this is not a shooting Suzanne. This is an opportunity to cut off this incessant bureaucracy building in the courthouse. If this isn't mandated or by law, it should all be thrown out.
Evidently, the emergency manager coordinator is mandated by the state. You're supposed to have somebody, actually, the judge is the emergency manager coordinator for the county, he's the emergency manager. The coordinator is, it works under him. And if you, and if you want, if you don't want, if you wanna cut off some more grants, if you wanna try to cut off grants, do away with the emergency manager coordinator. Every time there's a, an incident in Corners County, just like that burn thing the other day, the state was calling down here asking, asking the emergency manager coordinator what the heck was going on, because when you have something that goes off, it goes straight to the office, the office turns around, closes their regional liaison officer in San Antonio, he's down here calling, wanna know what's going on in Corners County.
And I must assure you, she didn't know.
She did.
She did, 'cause that bothered enough.
Pete, any comments?
We do need the emergency manager coordinator. The judge can't, isn't available to do that job all the time. I just assigned him, he did, but he's not good. But we do need to understand specifically what her duties are. And I agree with David that we're gonna need to create more bureaucracy, but we need to take care of it as we take care of it. So, and I would say this, that this, I don't need this assignment. This needs to be done by somebody in a next appropriate order for the emergency manager coordinator to take this duty, but we do need specific understanding of what her duties are.
So Pete, do you wanna, you don't wanna take no action on this? It was, I know Shelby's agenda, I'm just talking to Pete or Shelby, the guys. They don't wanna take no action on this and talk about putting it on the next workshop? And maybe have a little workshop on it and find out what duties, what kind of requirements does a person, he or she need? Be able to step into this?
Be appropriate and find out exactly what her duties are, what she's supporting good, what she is doing.
Or he or she may need some kind of enforcement experience. No, you don't need all that. No, yeah, I don't, I don't know, Shelby, I'm not positive, but...
What she lacks is the technology. I mean, no hands-on experience in any of this. Fire department, police department, oil fields, agriculture, you know, she has no hands-on experience.
But who hired her?
Butler.
Shelby, you don't have, you don't have to have any kind of enforcement experience, or?
You don't have to have real enforcement experience.
Would it be beneficial? I mean, I think it's a question you're asking. Would it be, you know, have some kind of formal training like David's referring to?
It would, but didn't you know what you pay for a full-time trainee?
Well, what are we paying for this one now?
Thirty, but you want to pay for a full-time trainee?
I don't know, there's a lot of questions.
That's correct, it's gonna depend what's the sixty thousand dollars a year.
There's a lot of questions that obviously need to be discussed before you, you step forward. Is this the same protocol we've always done, though, just, you know?
That this is the same protocol we've always done, though, just, you know? Pass on some moments, you have to answer them.
I have no problem going along with this, reassigning these duties. I have questions about the office, the amount of time that it takes to perform the duties in the office, and that sort of thing. I also have grave concerns, that every time you stack a little bit more on the desk, before long, someone will be back here saying, well, I really need a secretary. I can see someone standing up in the back, who was hired as the same old person, who knew how, it's two people working for them. And then, it's, I need a part-time secretary, and before long, you know, the, the office that I occupy over there has three ladies in it sometimes. And it's probably a one-lady job. So-
Shelby, you used to serve in this position as a part-timer. So you know what the operations are? There's a lot of after-hour duties that call out, et cetera, in the reporting?
Yes, sir.
Does Susanna have some certifications now? She does, doesn't she? And she's in ongoing training?
She, she has done a lot with the state to get certified and stuff. There's certain classes you have to take, that certify you as an emergency manager coordinator. She's up to date on all her training and stuff, for the national standard, and as well as the state standards. She's also in, in further educating herself at her own nickel. And she's doing today, she's at the, at the class that teaches, that just costs her about six hundred dollars, that she does not bill the county for. And as well, and then again, pretty soon, see, within next year or so, you're going to have to re-update your Hazers Mitigation Plan, which is a FEMA requirement. And then, you're going to end up having to do the rewrite to all the basic plans for the county, and so all that's coming up due. So, I guess we can-
Let's back up a step. What do we get from FEMA, the side regulation?
When there's a flood, we, we get-
You talk to the people at Sesta Hua, and see how much they got out of that last flood. From my standpoint, and this is with no research, the county ought to vote out of the FEMA deal, and get rid of a bunch of this, these junk offices that have been put in. That was put in, and a court that I happened to be at, there were six people objected to it, but there was so much pressure from Sesta Hua, that they did it. And I have talked to almost all of those people. Not a person got a penny out of anything. And I've talked to several other county judges from rural counties, and they're confident, says, if you are in a populous county, with a high minority percentage of population, and you have disaster, you get FEMA. If you don't, if you're not, get it. All you get is their regulations. Now, FEMA for me is a joke. I mean, if they don't, if they want this stuff done, they pay for it.
Well, back in two thousand and two, when we had the flood, we received a lot of reimbursement from FEMA, from-
It all bases on your documentation that you submit. You just can't walk up there and say, hey, I've been affected by this and that. They, they want to see all, all your documentation. But it's gotten to be a big process. City Kennedy, when they had their, think of the hurricane, that time they blew all the trees down, there was a lot of FEMA money come after them there. So it, I agree with David, FEMA is sometimes a point where it's, it's senseless, but there are some things that happen that are good.
Okay, maybe we should catch this in a different way. Is FEMA for the benefit of the governmental agencies, or is FEMA for the benefit of the individuals in the county? Because it sounds to me like the benefit is all going to governmental agencies, as your citizen.
Well, I know back during the hurricane plaid of two thousand and three, being a resident of Kennedy, we had severe damages and trees, et cetera. And rather than the individual landowner having to pay to have that removed, FEMA paid for contract workers to come in and hold off for you.
Well, I'm, I'm ringing, and I may be speaking out, I'm sure I'm speaking out of school, but that having been said, like I said, I, I, these mandated things, that they send all this one, these wonderful rules down with, and, and no money along with it, you know, to me, that makes sense.
That comes out of Austin too. You sent stuff there, me with-
Well, I know, I know, I'm aware, I mean, anything, any unfunded mandate, but anyway, but I've gotten off the subject. I apologize. I don't have any, personally, I don't have any problem with moving these duties to the ladies. You know, I think the, we've got, I've gotten it all off the subject, pardon, and we need to, we need to probably move on with this.
Yes, we do, too. Thank, thank you, David. So, with that all being said, y'all want to do a workshop on this? Shelby, you put on it?
I ain't got a problem putting on a workshop. Doesn't matter to me.
I was going to say, you know, if you want to vote on it, I'm, I'll, I'll upfront tell you, I'll go and vote to move this stuff over here, I don't care.
No, I, I think there's some concerns about if we need one or not, and people want to hear it in a workshop. We just, just say it all workshop, ain't got a problem with that.
I think for business purposes, we should transfer these duties to Susanna today, and still discuss her duties in a workshop. I think we need to take the duties from Vibe and transfer them to Susanna.
I would so, but-
Okay, so you're, you're saying the motion's going to be to transfer them, get them, get them from Vibe, give them to her, but still do a workshop?
On the duties of the-
And find, and find out all her credibility on this, and see what she needs, what classes she's took in.
I'd tell you the best, that I'd like to include the plus play manager in this workshop, as well as nine-one-one coordinator, and get them all on, on the same page.
We don't like to put that in this motion.
No.
And if, and if we see, which, hopefully she's, everything's fine, but if we see that, how would I put it? She's not right for the job, or something like that, then we move it on to someone else. Is that what you're saying? Basically, that's what, because if we're making the motion now, we're still going to have a workshop.
A workshop is separate from this.
Right.
Yeah. I think we're just moving the duties right there.
Her, her, it's, I don't write this to move the duties, to take them off of Vibe right now, but we're still going to have a workshop, to see her, her capabilities and everything, which I'm not saying she doesn't have them, but-
That's fair.
That'll be okay. You made the motion?
I made the motion.
Been made a second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none? Motion passes until we have a workshop. We're going to have a workshop on this agenda, I don't know. Item number thirteen. Discuss act to resubmit invoices for emergency lights and equipment used on a vehicle belonging personally to Constable David Hans. Donald, I'm sorry. I know, I know you don't want to stick with David.
Morning, Mr. Sade.
Good morning.
I got on the agenda today to resubmit these invoices that were quietly submitted to the board, and were voted to not be approved for payment. I think that was largely because there was a misunderstanding, as far as what these invoices were actually for. And so I just want to resubmit that today, to try to get them approved for payment. The invoices, both invoices that I submitted to the county, were for just equipment only.
Do we have, I'm sorry, do we have the center?
This, this truck chief.
Yeah, that's the cover sheet, this one here, right?
Uh, these invoices are for just equipment only, including the actual lights themselves, siren box that also controls the lights, console for that to be mounted in, siren speaker. And yes, this was all installed on my personal vehicle, but I paid for the labor to install. You know, I paid for, you know, the wire, and a lot of other, you know, small incidentals that it takes to rig out of a vehicle for, you know, emergency purposes.
Donald, what was the, what was the total of the parts?
The, it was-
The light siren on the-
Well, I don't know, two thousand dollars.
And these three figures, eight-eight-seven, six-oh-eight, and seven-four-eight?
Okay, the eight-eight, the eight, the eight-eight-seven is for the-
No, no, these, these other two, the eight-eight-seven and the six-oh-eight, those are showing light bars that were purchased for other precincts in the years prior to this.
Oh, I see, and one of those light bars used-
On their personal vehicles.
Okay, I see. Do you have any other dentists' fenders?
Dentists' fenders, and put in the rims.
So we have a history of, that we've done-
Yes, yeah, I mean, because the county does not provide us with a vehicle. So, in order to do our job, we have to use our personal vehicle.
So we just did this recently, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen?
Yes, sir.
I believe the, one of the main reasons is, when I talked to TAC, as far as insurance, and what the county could recover, since it's in a personal vehicle. Should the vehicle be totaled out, and our equipment that is purchased ruined, TAC cannot insure it or offer us insurance, because it is on a personal vehicle. So should there be an accident that totals out the equipment, the county would be at a loss. There would be no reimbursement.
Would your, would, would your insurance cover that?
I, I have checked with them, and I'm still waiting to hear back for the final verdict, to get with their underwriting department. I had to recently get back in touch with them, and they still hadn't had an answer for it. So I, I don't, I don't have an answer for that.
Donald, oh, sorry, David.
I don't know who Constable Hans has his insurance with, but commonly, if you have a vehicle insured and full coverage, any attached item is covered. If you have a pickup and put a service body on it, the service body's covered, any attached item is usually covered.
Well, and they, it probably, I mean, there's really not a question that would, but they would probably pay me, and I would have to reimburse the county. You know, but the fact of the matter is, we're only talking about two thousand dollars worth of equipment here. This is not equipment that lasts for a hundred years.
I, I understand. Okay, Donald, right here, again, these two were idea, the first two gave us, they're just what we bought for other ones, right?
Yes.
Okay.
The invoice is-
Thirteen ninety-nine twenty-one?
Yes, it's one, and then there's one-
And that's just for parts?
Yes, it's just parts.
And then there's another one, the seven-four-eight, and that is what? The siren and the control switches, or?
Yes, that, and that's also just for parts. I had a separate invoice from, from Rescue Ops, that was for the installation and the labor and all that, and I paid that personally.
Okay, and what was the thirteen ninety-one, these letters?
That is, that is for lights.
Okay, there's a couple of lights, that one's for the siren and the switch.
Yes, sir.
So one of the vehicle insurance that's on this thing for four hundred dollars, what does that cover? I mean-
That is just additional liability, that the county can insure the constables, because they drive their personal vehicles. It would not cover any of the property itself. It just ensures the county liable for any accident, should it be their fault.
You know, which, which also follows the claim that, I've been saying for a couple of years now, that the county should provide us with vehicles. And none of this would be an issue.
Nice.
Get your shit, get your shit, so two thousand and ten, we're on to it.
Yeah.
So why don't you agree that these other lights were put on personal vehicles, and paid for by the-
Yes, they have been in the past. But that was before we had clarification from TAC about the insurance issues.
All right, so the only issue is that if they get destroyed?
How's the county going to recover?
The, the insurance would not pay for it, I think.
Well, the issue is-
They would not be on our insurance. Donald would have to insure him, and make the claim on his insurance. Now, if he covers his insurance at actual value or replacement value?
So since he's using it for down the business, it's been done for what he can legally pay for.
Donald, does your insurance allow you to use your personal vehicle for?
You know, that's, that's been a, something that was brought up with me checking on, to see if they could put a separate rider on the policy to reimburse the county, instead of me, for this. That's kind of in question now. In the past, my, I have state farm insurance. They have, you know, been aware that, that at least one of my vehicles is used for emergency purposes. And I've told them that, yes, I am covered, it's a higher, you know, premium and everything else. But when they went to the underwriters, checking on this, they said there's questions about that now, too. So, that's kind of, I'm waiting on a, you know-
Ms. Yarwood, you have any comments, really quick?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be, I'll be brief.
Thank you.
The, we have a discussion here about two thousand dollars. Let's just say that he totaled his vehicle out, and the insurance pays for his car. Who cares if the county recovers two thousand dollars? I mean, what, what kind of a dent is that going to put in our budget?
Two thousand dollars here, two thousand dollars there, two thousand dollars there.
Well, we can say the same thing about the courthouse, and say the same thing about this building, we can say the same thing about a whole ration of stuff. And it's not, and it's not two thousand dollars, now we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars. But nobody puts that as an issue, I mean, any of that is, is, is what we're doing right here. I mean, this is insane.
I understand, I understand.
Then again, you've had previous issues about the court spending money willy-nilly, and we're trying to establish policy.
Here's, here's a man that's, that's actually performing a long, important function out of his own pocket, and this, this is insanity.
Certified.
I'm putting these on a, on a fifty thousand dollar vehicle that I purchased myself, to have a dedicated vehicle for my constable duties.
My only question is, is the costs in two years, and probably you've got more equipment part, but the last invoice in here was for something like eight hundred, if I remember. And now, we're already up to two thousand. Does the other constable just not require or need as much equipment?
They, they kind of went a different route. You know, putting a light bar on, you know, a regular old police light bar on, on top. I went the route of putting, you know, hideaway lights, towards not as obvious.
So, so if you roll the cars, there's a possibility that you will damage the lights, because they're highway, they're going to be in your front grille, they're going to be in the back.
They're, they're on, they're mounted on the front grille, they're mounted on-
We don't want you to roll the car hurt yourself, we did not, we're talking about getting hurt.
I would prefer that.
Yeah, we don't want you to get hurt.
They're mounted on the-
I make the motion, we pick this.
Seconded.
Okay, and that was, I, I forgot my-
Now, I, I need to, I need to add something to this, and I don't know if this really matters for y'all's purposes or not. The, the bill from Rescue Ops was passed due, and the guy was kind of calling me about payment. I went ahead and paid him personally. And I can come up with a receipt for that, but all these, I've now personally paid for all of this.
Okay.
So I need to reimburse it.
Oh, reimbursement?
Yes.
Okay, guys, in the motion, that's reimbursing Donald Hans. Because they already can pay, providing you've got all the documents, and such, and such, and these, right? Okay. Item number thirteen, motion's been made, and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, none? Motion passes. You two, be careful. Don't flip, don't flip that car, man.
I'm going to drive.
Moving it on to item number fourteen. Discuss approved, disapproved purchase by, by the Elections Administration Department of a server laptop backup. This purchase is necessary because Microsoft has discontinued the Windows two thousand software program, which is required for the hard voting system software to function properly. And afterward, two thousand and fifteen, the Windows two thousand can no longer be purchased or sold. This purchase was initially budgeted for, for and in the Elections Administration budget, but was moved to the IT Director budget, and expenditure was included in the approved fiscal year two thousand and fifteen budget for that department. Because of the time restraints, this purchase has no longer, can no longer be derated in anticipation, anticipation of hiring an IT Director. Karen?
I apologize, because I just realized that I didn't put the amount in there, but I believe it's two thousand five hundred and twenty-five, that I'd likely not quote me on that. It's somewhere around that, but it's definitely under three thousand dollars. And it's the same amount that I did put in the budget, and it is in the budget. But as we know, everything got moved over to the IT budget for any type of computer purchases, although this is not just a computer. It's actually part of our election system, it's part of the tally system that, that we use. And so, all I'm wanting to do is go ahead and purchase the computer. I can't wait for the IT Director to hire it. And because of the Windows two thousand issue, they won't allow any vendors to sell Windows two thousand to anyone, and after, I think it's March. And so I just want to get the purchase done before that happens, because what, what this computer's actually going to do is get set back in cabinet, until if we, for a backup, we need it. It will not be used now, but since we spent over two hundred thousand dollars on election equipment- We need it, will not be used now, but since we spent over $200,000 on election equipment, this will of course en, ensure its, you know, life term or whatever. So that, so that if that one servo computer that I have would ever go down, which we all know that, you know, you using a computer and, you know, it could go down, this would extend the life so that we can continue to use the equipment.
You can put one in the cabin, right? Which one?
The new one.
Okay, can you update the, the Windows 2000 to the XP or Windows 8.1?
That's the whole point, is that.
It's not available?
This computer is, no, no. It's specifically for that.
This can't be purchased after March. Does that tell us that this is gonna become obsolete next year? Or what are you telling us?
I'm telling you that this particular software program that Hart has gotten approved through the Secretary of State, or that, that this particular program only works with Windows 2000. So I have to have a backup for that Windows 2000 computer so that when it goes down, if, I, I say when, but if it would ever go down, I would be able to continue to use the equipment. Yeah, if we did not have a backup, yes, that would cause some problems and some of the equipment would be obsolete. Yes. Because Windows.
So you get this backup equipment, how long is?
It's, it's a single little laptop computer, just so you know.
How long would this equipment be good if you get this backup?
To me, 15, 20 years, whatever the normal life of election equipment is. I don't, you know, whatever, normal life of election equipment. This, this just ensures that we'll continue to use the same equipment because in order to use the, I mean, I'm not professing to know anything about IT, but in order to utilize a system and a software program, it has to have all of the components. This is just one small component. And if it were to go down, then the rest of the equipment wouldn't have that component to work with. And thereby, then some of it would need to be replaced because we have to find something that it would work with.
I think I understand what you're talking about, I think. Why is it that Hart is not upgrading their stuff to a more current operating system?
Because it's, it's, they are creating a new system, a new election system. But, I mean, it's like this big complicated deal that this particular program, the program that we purchased where we're using is, is set up and it can't be changed because of the, the election laws of the United States as well as the state. Once that election equipment is certified, it has to, every component of it needs to stay the same. So Hart does not have an option. And of course, they created this election equipment back when they thought Windows 2000 was, you know, the thing. But now it's not. So there are new programs that they're gonna get certified and pay for certification and things like that. They're upgrading, but obviously I want to avoid Hart County having to spend another 500,000 or whatever.
This is already a budget?
All we have to do really is move it from one department to the other.
And the IT?
Well, actually, it's not necessarily a move to the department. It's just authorizing Kurt to spend out of some other department's budget.
And the IT Director? And it was budgeted for?
Yes, sir, as, as we were warned that this was gonna happen.
So you knew you were gonna, you were gonna need it?
That's correct.
You're gonna need it. I mean, I don't see a problem. And if it was budgeted, you'd be moving some other, the IT Director can just be moved over?
Actually, it'll just be paid out of the IT.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It'll just be paid out of there?
A move that we allow Karen to go ahead and purchase her computer and use the money that already, already has been budgeted for.
Which will come out of the IT Director?
Yes.
Second. Been made a second. All favors say aye. Aye. Any, any against? None. Motion passes.
I'll vote.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I jumped the gun. Sorry.
And I vote because when we set the budget up, I asked a comment, is this money gonna be spent toward our IT Director? And she said no. So for that reason, I'll vote. I understand that, as you said, I don't understand why, because she said she needed it to be paid if it don't be.
And if I just might make a comment on that, we did the same exact thing for the tax office last, last meeting because they have stuff that they had to get. We can't wait forever to give them the stuff that we could in our right.
Thank you, Carol. Okay, there was three on and four and one against. Y'all wanna put against? Go ahead. We're gonna go back to item number, go with the seven. Yeah, item number seven. The sheriff machine.
I know we had two. We're good, we decided to go with Trinity. And the reason is, is they have, they have their setups where they bring their, and set up in, in the booking. I mean, in the jail, the jail front office. Where they have like their ATM machine, they'll set it up where if the family wants to deposit money in the offender's account, they can just go there, type everything and swipe their card, or they have a drop box for money and they drop it in there. Trinity will monitor and they will come and monitor, get out the box. Keep records of the money since deposited or it's, it's deposited to their ATM.
And keep it as.
And then the other one doesn't. Yeah, they don't have the drop box. They keep accounts of what we have to have recorded.
Trinity was the 20%.
No, Trinity was the 15%.
Oh, that was the 15%? And they also have, what, all for?
Right, and then the, or it's TP was 20%, but they didn't have that. We would have to handle all the money.
That's the number one difference is that our employees would have to handle money under that proposal and then the other one, they do it all.
Well, I noticed on, on the one that you're rejecting, it also said adjusted gross. And we didn't, I didn't take a look what you adjusted gross is, so that could be some difference.
We would like it that our employees not handle money at all though. Let them do it all and then make an accounting.
Yeah, that, yeah, I would agree with you on that one.
Realizing that once these people are hired, excuse me, they're going to be able to run their program as they see fit and I understand that. And this is only a personal request, but as you talk to and negotiate with them, I've had more than a few helpers who've had an opportunity to spend quality titles in county or other detention facilities. And some of these fees that they charge are almost exorbitant for prisoners. I understand they're to make money, they're there to make money. I understand that the county gets a percentage of it. But I would hope that in the odds monitoring that you would see that the, and Scott verified.
And also Wilson County and B County.
Right, you have a curve of things to say? Any comments you wanna go on?
I'm going to accept the bid that Sheriff's recommendation for Trinity.
Trinity Service Corps. Okay, do I hear a second? Been made a second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Go left. Okay, going back to item number, we're going to 15. Discuss approved, disapproved proposal from Tyler Technologies for historical index conversion services to be paid from the Records Management Fund. Total cost is 8,840 plus annual fee of 1,000. Carol?
Oh, I'll speak on behalf of Carol in our office. This is for our virtual books. Like all the deeds and deeds of trust, we would be indexed for this. We thought they would be able to use what we have now with the conversion and they are able to, and this is why there's the, the additional side.
So it'll be a thousand dollars every year?
Yes, sir.
Right here, motion?
All made.
It's been made.
Just like the, the item has been transferred from the IT budget?
It is not a budgeted item this year. Carol is requesting that it comes out of the Records Management Fund, the County Clerk's Records Management Fund, which they collect fees monthly on all activities throughout the office. It's in, it's in the record.
Second. Been made a second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion passes. Item number 16. Discuss approved, disapproved hiring ADIP PC accounting firm of San Antonio to conduct an audit of the county's books, records and accounts for fiscal year 2013 to 2014. It was audited by Judge Long. I did not discuss with the judge anything about this item. I don't know if one of the other commissioners did.
No, I haven't.
This was already discussed in the budget preparations last year and they were acknowledged to be the auditing firm for this coming year. They anticipated having started last Monday on the 26th, but they were still finishing up some ongoing audits. They are supposed to be onsite this coming Monday, the second.
Okay, so we need a motion.
Is there an amount that they're gonna charge us?
Well, there's a set amount for the audit. As you know, this last year we incurred additional expenses.
What's the set amount?
I believe it's 30,000. I don't have it in front of me.
Approximately.
Well, this is, this is what I call a snapshot audit, not a whole year's work.
Correct. It, it's for an entire year's period, but they don't audit every transaction that took place. Otherwise, they'd be here months.
Now, your motion?
So made.
It's been made. Ten second. In all the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion passes. Item number 16. Item number 17. Discuss approved, disapproved treasurer's bond for 100,000. Go on.
This was not available at the last meeting when all other bonds were lifted officially approved. The annual fee for the bond is 540 dollars. It is included in this cycle for payment.
I had that bill at the office on, he said it was ready, so I'm not sure why it wasn't made for the last meeting.
I'm making motion, we approve the treasurer's bond of 100,000 dollars. Request about the county.
Second.
Been made a second. All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion passes. Item number 18. Discuss approved, disapproved NCOX remote training for the Auditor's Department. Dates available is March 18, 2015, and March 20, 2015, at 175 per hour. Go on.
At the time I prepared this agenda item, the break quoted to me was the 175 per hour. We're anticipating two days, March 18th and March 20th. These days are exclusively for the Auditors Department as when the go-live technicians were here. They can utilize 99.9% of the time out of Treasurer's Office. So we're looking at 16 hours. It is remote training. The technician will not actually be on site. So the fee was reduced to 125 per hour as opposed to the 175. So we're looking at a total of $2,000 for those two days.
Go on, remotely, y'all do it online or?
We are on the phone with a technician and any questions we have, they will, they can either have access to our computers and drive and show us what needs to be done, or give us verbal directions.
So, and that's, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not quite, so that's all three?
That's Gina, Michelle and my son.
For 125, remember?
Yes.
125 is the, right, if it's not a person.
Right, correct. The total for those two days would be $2,000 as shown in the proposal I just gave you.
Is this in the budget, I assume?
It is in the capital outlay budget for this transition.
Well, what kind of problems you can see in with this NCOX?
It's called the NCOX 10. The X is Roman numeral 10. Things that we have a business to do is develop reporting because you have to set up specific reports as you want them presented. They don't just have a standard like Ableton used to do that would generate. We can get more detailed reports. We have not had any training whatsoever as setting up budgets, which that's upcoming quickly, which will need to be learned. We also need to learn different manners in which to audit different things. We have some access into the cash sharing and payroll side view only. But when I'm doing an audit on payroll, I have to go through multiple screens to confirm every entry. I'm sure there's a simpler way, but I'm just not privy to it yet.
I'm making motion, we approve the NCOX remote training for the Auditor's Department for the dates of 3/18/15 and 3/20/15 for the total amount on the invoice, $2,000.
Ten second.
Been made a second. All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion passes. We're in the item number 19. Discuss act on account payable cycle schedule, which were, which will have altered due dates of bills to the Auditors Department facilitate the printout for Commissioners Court to be available for review at a minimum of three days before each meeting. See a tag schedule for remain, remainder of fiscal year 2015. Go on.
I have provided the schedule to Erica. I'm hoping she made all a copy in your packet. Judge Long had previously requested the bills to be ready earlier to allow the Commissioners Court to review. To do that, we will need to adjust all items, the dates that they're doing in our office, the dates that the official needs to approve them in our offices, and the date that the actual printout is available. Technically, this does not require action because based on local government code, I have the authority to set the, and enforce the regulations to facilitate the business of the accounting side of the county. That's local government code 113.064 and 112.001.
What orders, I'm sorry?
113.064 and 112.001. Under 113.064, it specifically says in the county that has the Office of County Auditor, each claim, bill and account against the county must be filed in sufficient time for the auditor to examine and prove it before the meeting of Commissioners Court. So therefore, the Commissioners Court's wanting it early, I have the authority to set the timeline on when everything has to transpire. So technically, it's a ministerial duty just to go along with it. Y'all have actually approved the accounts payable process.
That was 113.064?
Correct.
Will this, will this, uh, will this schedule present problems for us paying some of our vendors or whoever submits claims in a timely manner? Or will, I mean, will some of them overlap? Was I guessing?
Would they interfere with anything?
Well, like for instance, for our next court meeting on February 10th, the bills will be due, that will be paid that day in our office today. And so therefore, anything that comes in the first through the 15th or the next due date would be the 17th. So anything that comes in there will be pushed to the end of the month cycle. As a governmental entity, we have 30 days from the receipt of a bill to pay it without any late fees.
I see. And I call the vendors that are used to it being the way it is, how do they find out that we're changing the law like this? When they send in a bill, then they're gonna call, they're not gonna get it, then they're, then they'll realize to send it the next time further?
It would be almost impossible for us to contact every vendor, vendor and let them know if it's changed.
They'll see, it's just gonna, they'll learn as they go.
Correct. Again, we have 30 days, so even if we receive a bill on February 10th and it gets paid February 28th, we're within our 30 days timeline.
What about any reimbursements to like employees and stuff like that that they'll?
They have to follow the same submission. If it's due on the 30th to be paid the 10th, if we get it the 31st, if we get it next Monday, we can't do it because we have to have ample time to review and get it in the system, et cetera.
And that'll get us, that'll get, that'll get us that paperwork?
It will make that technical paperwork available to the Commissioners Court three days before court.
So it'll be done, finished then?
As it is right now, the paperwork is available the day before court.
Yes, so that'll give us an additional two days.
If what you've provided us is what we're working on now, is that correct?
No, that is the new schedule.
This is your proposal?
Yes, yes. And it will start effective today. And it will start effective today with our next bill cycle scheduled for February tenth.
I move we approve this.
She said that we didn't need a motion on it, right?
Okay. Just, just, no, that's information. A lot.
Thank you. Item number nineteen. Item number twenty, discuss approve, disapprove, engineering services contractor, Masonic Engineering, for County Road two eleven, baby.
Good morning. Um, Mike Wozniak has asked us to help with improvements to County Road two eleven, and that is not one of the projects that's on the Centville seventeen forty-seven list, so this week it's paid for out of his general budget. Um, and the budget amount, uh, at this point, looks like it's somewhere between two and a half to three million, and so our contract before you is attorney, package service where we take care of all the plans, the bid documents, the inspection, the testing, and it's for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I'll be glad to answer any questions, I know I'm not here, but if there's something I can answer easily, I'll try.
I met, I met with Mike yesterday. Yeah. Draxler here, comments, questions?
Jim, do you review this contract?
I've seen it done.
This is the same form of contract that we've used on the other ones?
Two eleven is on seventeen forty-seven.
Is not on seventeen forty-seven.
Well, I have a copy right here unless it's on.
Well, the original list.
It's road number four.
Miss man, the original list included projects that extend beyond the money that we receive. So the top three projects on the list are ones that are within the program right now. We can always change that list with a notice to text on, but right now, it's gonna get paid for out of the regular budget, is my understanding.
Go on.
James, whenever he gets through, this is the topic that I want to speak on, is the roads, so we'll, I'll let Mr. Underbridge finish, and then I'd like to have my citizens to be hurried right to speak.
Okay, all in all. Or is the broker potential to speak?
I'll be brief. Uh, I'd like to know, number one, uh, how many miles of road are we talking about on this two eleven, and what are the engineering fees on that road that have the, that is two and a half to three million dollars?
The road is seven miles in length, and the fees are two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
About the total cost, we have almost three million. Okay, and, and I know I'm asking, I know I'm asking a stupid question, but what are you providing for this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
We're, we're doing all the surveying work on the roads, we're doing the testing to look at the soil and the build that's on the road. We're making all the plans for the contractor to bid competitively, which will help with the preparation process, and then we're gonna be out inspecting. Mike wants us to do everything, so that there's no, nothing for his people to have to do on top of what we're doing.
The bridge is covered, it's not gonna drainage.
Right, if there's any coverage that needs to be tended to, we'll, that in mind.
What if they inspect all the job every day?
Um, well, as needed, not necessarily every day, but we can, we can have them out there whenever they need to be out there.
That, that would be my concern, Pete brought up, is this contracting, first of all, I'm all in favor if we can contract out cheaper than, or more efficiently than doing it in-house, that's fine with me. However, what little I've noticed over my lifetime is the highway department doesn't do a project for the contractor, they don't have someone on site virtually all the time to make sure that there's no shortcuts being done, or the, I would surely think that there would need to be almost a solid presence at the, at the site.
We're, we're gonna have other projects also being worked on, so, I, I mean, I, I agree, we'll be up here almost full-time, and we won't be on that one project full-time, we'll be on other projects as well.
Well, I understand, I mean, you could move back and forth, but as long as there's, that, that'll us know that somebody looking over their shoulder, they might come two hours from now, it's, you know.
Yes, and, and there are days when the contractor may not work, and they may work four tens like, like the road bridge crews do, so, I mean, there's exceptions, but yeah, we have to watch it.
So you're estimating the to, total cost of that whole project to be two hundred and fifty, uh, two, two million five?
Two million five to three million, right.
Based on what we've already put on the road, who are expected was three hundred thousand dollars against the material on that road?
Yes, and you know, of course, what's happening is the truck traffic hits it, pulverizes it, and blows away, so I'm not sure how much of that's still there.
This is crazy.
It really is.
This is crazy.
We're, we're paying, you're the teller side, you're the engineer, I mean, you can't.
We're just chased in truck traffic, and, 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 you know, we're, you know.
Excuse me, Charlie, you, you, you want us to go ahead and speak, you wanna go ahead and speak?
Yeah, I'll speak, I slide down my road, I slide to my house, because the majority of the county roads in this, this, this county are not being addressed. This seventeen forty-seven, we got seven point seven million dollars from a state grant, and we're addressing ten to twelve miles of road in the county with it, over four hundred thousand dollars a mile. That leaves the rest of the, the county at, at five hundred and forty plus or minus miles of road, we don't have any hope of ever getting anything. Ours are actually worse than they've ever been, I've lived on them for twenty-five years, and I, there's, there's, there's literally dirt, and you're sliding down with three tenths of an inch of rain, and we're gonna spend six million, or three million, or four million on a couple of miles of road because the trucks are using it? I mean, I understand that, that, that the trucks, roads need addressed too, but also, those companies also help provide material for those roads, not to mention, in fact, there's a, a great number of roads out there that have had material put on them, only to the fact that it blows away, it washes away, but we go put the road graders on them, and we pull the dirt up from the ditch, which is what they do on ours all the time, whenever we do see them. Something has got to change, and this is not the program where we're going to continue to pay, I'm sorry, no offense, Mr. Underbridge, I appreciate your expertise, and we ask for help, but we've already paid him over three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, we're gonna pay him two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on one road, you're never gonna see enough money to address even a hundred mile, I mean, this whole deal is a hundred miles worth of road, and it would cost forty-five million dollars if we, if we ever think you're gonna get forty-five million dollars from the state, which I don't think you're going to get. So my point, my suggestion to you is I'm asking for some accountability on what Mr. Wozniak is doing right now, because I can tell you, there is nobody monitoring the roads out where I live, or what's being done, it is, might as well take the money and throw it in the wind, because that is what is happening, and it's what's happened for twenty-five years. But this, this, this aspect of spending four hundred to four hundred and fifty thousand miles for a road on about ten or twelve miles worth of road in our county to serve, I would have to assume, the trucks, is just not serving the citizens out here that live on county roads, which is over forty percent of the people in this, this county, that pay taxes, and we are getting absolutely nothing for the services of the road and bridge department. That's County Road two eleven in Falls City, right? That's towards Cemetery Road.
On the way to Falls City. Thank, thank you, the coordinator, the partner, oris.
This is finished with the roads, and we brought this up during seventeen forty-seven discussion. Seven million dollars is not gonna do the help out of this county, but the biggest problem we have in this county is there's no direction, there's no plan, and there's actually no effort to make a plan by the, by the director or Road and Bridge Minister. It appears that Mike Wozniak and Road Bridge follows the, the oil company trucks, and that's the last place he should be looking. I mean, he needs, he needs to have these crews out here fixing roads where there's no truck traffic, because you can't, you can't get ahead of those, those trucks when they're, when they're laying pads and drilling for oil and doing all the other things that they do, all you do is just throwing your money away. And in the meantime, the rest of the county is just suffering, and we're supporting the oil companies, they don't need our support. If that road gets so bad, if they can't use it, trust me, they will build a road, and they will maintain that road so that their trucks can get to that oilway. And they've done it in this county, they've done it in other counties. The second part is, and, and, and Ms. Hall said, when they do, when the road crews go out and work, I can, I can attest from personal experience and knowledge, no supervision, they send a motor grader out there, they'll send six, ten trucks of road material out there, they'll run a motor grader over it, they don't contact it, and I have yet to see a single supervisor go out there and see if it was done right. I can tell you, on my road, they did it twice, and he still didn't get it right. So one of the problems we have is no supervision on the part of Road and Bridge, the other part is, no supervision of Road and Bridge on the part of the county Commissioners Court.
Ian, if, if we're gonna save all this money that we have in the budget, if we're gonna spend this money, you have to realize, none of this ends up being chip sealed, none of the projections of, of Wozniak on the, the supposed twenty million, which he does, he's knocked down to ten million, we've got about nine million worked for it now, which is, he's just asking for two or three million of that, so we'll end up with about five million to address the rest of the roads after we address two eleven. But none of it is chip sealed. If you all would go to Goliath County, Bee County, Lee County, Furio County, and see that when these people actually had the money and the knowledge, they, they sealed their roads, they chip sealed their roads, I live right next to Goliath County Road, the only thing they had to do was shred it, I, I, I don't even know if they own a road grader. I mean, we had an opportunity, or have had an opportunity, to do something positive, something that will actually reduce our maintenance cost in the future, but we just keep doing the same stupid old things, except for a few miles worth of road that are going to get, the prescription on just about all of these is four inches of sandstone and ten inches of limestone base, there's a few, one that gets six inches of sandstone and ten inches of limestone base, the rest of them get four inches of sandstone and ten inches of limestone base. And if you've ever driven down that, if you ever, any of you ever live on a county road, and, and it rains, you take the road with you with your tires when you get off. I, I just don't think any of you have a possibility of experiencing what we experience when we get three tenths of an inch of rain. It's a tragedy, we've been in a drought for three years, but, you know, at least we've just been eating dust, now when we get a little rain, we can't even get to our houses, and nobody seems to care or hold anybody accountable. I've been coming to these things for seven years, and nothing has changed. I've been on the same road for twenty-five years, I watched my ninety-year-old neighbor have been raised and died on it, and it is worse, nothing has changed. Please do something logical and smart with the money.
I would very, I would agree with Mrs. Hall and, um, Mr. Yarner, the, and, and this is an all deference, I see, um, Mr. Rios back here that works for Road and Bridge, but it appears to the layman that there is no rhyme or reason to what they do, that it's almost a knee-jerk reaction, or whoever yells aloud, and in some instances, I suspect who, uh, came up with a gratuity or something for a favor, and they allow, no proof of that, but it's awfully strange, and certain roads get fixed frequently and others don't. Now, the thing I brought up to Wozniak the other day, when I was talking to him and Judge Long, is the roads in Precinct Four, south of Rooney, out of the Eagle, have not seen county maintenance, which is where they are, in probably two years, they don't even bother to go drag the roads. He's, well, you know, we got equipment, equipment there now, he says, okay, since one maintainer, a presence will chill some of this stuff, some of them are almost impassable, but we're paving a few tenths of a mile to get to a housing addition on the river that is on private property. I mean, there's some insanity in the way all of this is being administered. I think in the future, this is my opinion only, that we need to hire a really good business manager, get construction experience, and put that person in charge, you can find a construction for him, we, what we need is a business manager in there, and we need to pay enough money to get the job done.
Are you sure, baby, Carlos?
Well, I agree with, I agree with them, I'm not gonna repeat anything they said, but, uh, when this new budget came out, the first thing that Mike did, he said, I need this machine, I need this machine, I need this machine, I need this machine, okay, there went half the budget right there, I knew right then the roads weren't gonna get fixed, it was, the handwriting was on the wall. But he buys all this equipment, or what, I don't know.
Can you show them the brick on this County Road two eleven you got, dude?
All right, we had a discussion about miles per hour, we couldn't put any signs up that said over thirty miles per hour, over thirty miles per hour of road, unless they had certain criteria. Will this road have criteria, do we have sixty mile an hour speed limit that y'all complete?
Uh, yes, but you still may not wanna put a sixty mile an hour speed limit.
Well, I'm not saying that, but it will have criteria, we'll be engineered, give us two of them.
I spent a lot of time at Road and Bridge, and you can ask Mr. Rios, I've argued with Mike that we need to stop building some of these roads and actually take care of the work orders that are turning in. There are a lot of roads that need to be addressed, not so much building the roads right now, but just go ahead and maintain what we got, 'cause we're, I'd say seventy-five or eighty-five percent of the time, he's, he's, like, we've spent, in Gillette area, County Road two sixty-nine, two seventy-seven, those are long roads, and, and he's, you know, we spent, I'd say, close to four, four million dollars on baserade this year, on pa, on limestone base, not that we need to have limestone base, in my opinion, but being asked the road manager, you know, and, uh, there are some roads around Shoals that we've had some problems with, and he's, he's gone in and, and fixed some of those, and some around in the Pont, well, by Ponte area, that's in, within Cornes County, and there's some out in Coy City, and, and, and Peaks, Peaks Precinct, there's a, a lot of roads that looks like a, a bombing range, like Halt's been walking through the road, and, uh, but yet he still continues to think that we have to fix these certain roads all the time, and everything else gets neglected, and, uh.
Well, why is that, where, where's the logic, and who determines which road, I've asked this question a hundred times, I mean, where does two eleven go? I bet it go, I bet it goes doing oil, so.
No, two eleven cuts across from, uh, eleven forty-four to alley one twenty-three. Twenty-one, excuse, twenty-one.
The reason that, that two eleven is being looked at is 'cause it is one of the most heavily-used roads in the county.
By the, by the, by the local, right?
Well, it, yes, yes, absolutely. Right, so that's what we're doing, I mean.
They will pay for it, then, not us.
Well, they do pay for it, they're paying taxes, but, but, I mean, there needs to be some rationale to, to, to looking at maybe where their oil field isn't, and fixing those roads, not at four hundred thousand dollars a mile, maybe at a lesser charge, and then, and then, and then, you know, you can get those done, and they won't be torn up for twenty-five years, and then you can go chase the oil field. And, and his comment is relevant, why don't you look for somebody, if you're talking to Wozniak, and he's not, not, not doing what you want, why don't you guys get together and fire him, and hire somebody that will do what you want, because inevitably, it's going to fall on you, you're responsible, Wozniak collects his check and he's going on, we're holding you guys accountable. So, what do y'all think about that?
I do understand completely what y'all are saying, and I'm not in any way against what y'all are saying, or anything, except, it's like, I don't get shot, 'cause I hear y'all, I don't live on a county road, I've never lived on a county road, so.
We understand it, you know.
I don't understand living on a county road, and bombing the range two or three inches, I've been down them all the time, you know, for years, years, but I don't live, uh, on a county road, but I'll be, and I could be completely making a mistake here, but I know that a lot of these roads are probably getting fixed, because it is high traffic, you know, with, uh, oil rigs and all that, with eighteen wheelers, and there is still, how many, how many, uh, Corning County citizens did down that road?
Yes.
Of two eleven?
I'm not certain.
But there's houses out there, there's people out there.
You know, I get calls, at least two, citizens.
I think what I'm trying to say is, and I know that two and a half billion dollars is a lot of money, if it was a seven mile, seven miles, but it's gonna be fixed, but those citizens also have a right to be on a smooth road, and they got all the high traffic on there, can you imagine how their road is if it's not fixed?
Yeah, Ian, where do these figures come from, I mean, I have a unique opportunity that we actually, we actually know, an, an A and N graduate that's a constructural engineer that actually has a business that builds roads, so I just randomly called him up and gave him these specs, twenty foot wide road, so much sandstone, so much limestone base, give me an idea of what you would, what you would charge to put that road in, and the figure came in around a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and Mr. Wozniak has point-blank told us that he can chip seal the roads, no problem, for twenty thousand. $20,000 a mile, he can chip seal them. Yet we're using seal coat, which Mr. Wozniak also said would have to be reapplied at least twice, if not three times, but yet the seal coat has a residual and it'll only last for so long, but yet we chose the seal coat route and not the chip seal route, and will last longer. I've lived on the same road for 25 years, I've asked people in Goliad how long their chip sealed roads were put, I can't find anybody over the age of 60 that can remember them being put in, and they have had a gas play by Chesapeake in that county and they have lasted, and all they have to do is shred, and the roads have held up just fine, just fine. And we drive all over this, Furio, up to Throckmore. The county roads, most people in Lee County, they had an Austin chalk plate, they chip sealed their roads. Actually, Mr. Kleinsmith was the one who told me that, he lived on a dirt road and it made the chip sealed it. They're using their money wisely and prudently, but I promise you, if you go to those counties like Bee County, they're not gonna tell you they spent $500,000 a mile or $450,000 a mile getting it prepared to chip seal. You're gonna have to do some research and work and find out what, when your tax base is fixed, you cut in half, it's, you see it coming, you're gonna have to be wise stewards of your money and wiser than you have been just this past year, because the money's not gonna go very far, this thing's gonna come and go and we're gonna end up with 10 or 12 miles worth of road sealed coated.
The items, the items on the table for motion.
All right, when do you intend to...
Are you speaking to the microphone? I can't hear you.
On the phone. When do you intend the head traffic to be on this road?
Well, we're gonna need about a month to get the plans put together. We've already done a little bit of work on it, 'cause he asked us to get started each day. So about another month to get the plans ready.
All right, well, do you allow us to let Jeff Chapman, our board, look at this contract and bring this back next week? We have to get it done today?
Well, it just slows the process down. It's up to you if you'd like to delay that as far as I'm aware.
Erica?
Yes, sir.
Do you know when Walton will be available next week for me?
If he's ready, I have him, but probably as soon as possible, we can do it from evening.
He's available Monday afternoon, he has court on Tuesday, and then there's sometime on the 4th, and which is Wednesday, and on Friday, he's unavailable on Thursday.
Wait. So he's not very available next week, is that what you said?
Friday and then Wednesday.
Monday, we're trying to be pushing him real bad, Monday afternoon, but not too much. Wednesday and one other day, Friday? Anytime, Wednesday?
Wednesday, it would be in the morning, or Wednesday after, well, 2 o'clock.
So, if y'all wanna...
You would literally have toast today for Wednesday meeting. So we think, I think you're down to drive.
It's within 72 hours, we'd be okay.
Your next regular meeting is the 10th. It's not that much work in the way.
You wanna just, you're okay with being put on to the next one?
That's not really any difference either.
Okay, there wouldn't be any difference just to wait on it?
Well, it's a choice.
I want to get it going as soon as possible, but I'll let you go. I might, I might get Jeff to... It is the same one that we did before?
It is.
Shelby David? Y'all wanna, David, you wanna wait for the next scheduled meeting on the 10th, right?
That'd be the 10th, I think.
I would move that we would table items 20 and 21 until the next regular meeting.
Just no action?
No action.
No action. Shelby?
The meeting or...
This agenda item?
You wanna do it this week, this coming week?
Well, David said it'd be fine for the next scheduled meeting on the 10th, it's okay with him. You wanna make it sooner, we can do it, we can do it at Wednesday at 9 o'clock if it's okay with the judge.
Or at 2:00 p.m.
Or at 2:00 p.m., which at 9 o'clock would probably be better for everyone, y'all wanna do it? Pete?
I'd like to, I'd like to do it as soon as possible.
You wanna, you have a comment?
You can't do it, we'll stay at 9:00 in the morning because you don't have a 72-hour notice.
No, we can do it after lunch, after 2:00. You know what, let's just go ahead and wait for the next regular scheduled meeting.
You see your own beat. All right. I mean, I can cancel it.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and just take no action, only it'll be put back on on the regular scheduled meeting, which is the 10th, right?
Yes.
All right, at 9 o'clock in the morning, we'll be back on it. And that's item number 20. Just, item number 21, we took no act, we took no action on it?
No action, you wanna take it?
No, just no action is fine. Okay, number 21. Discuss, approve, disapprove, engineering services contract with Nace Smith Engineering for 2015 seal coat.
And on this one, I suppose the same issues are in place as far as reviewing contracts, I think this one's been looked at by...
Pete, do you want that one to be looked at too? Just the elements of the same thing.
I think you ought to just go ahead, 21 and 22, and throw them over to the next meeting.
Okay, discuss, approve, disapprove, authorizing the advertisement for bids on county road 199, that's something different than these other two.
Bids.
Yeah. Number 21, y'all wanna go ahead and take no action on that one till the 10th? Okay. Number 21's also gonna, we're gonna take no action on, it's gonna be put back on the 10th. Item number 22. Discuss, approve, disapprove, authorizing the advertisement for bid for county road 199, David?
Okay, so this one is one of the 1747 roads, so it would be reimbursed to the county by the transportation inspector fund, and so we've been working on the plans under the original contract and have those ready for bids, so we can get the county to authorize preparation.
That one was approved. 1747.
It is.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll show them.
But they...
I second it.
But they second it, all bayers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion passes. Item number 22. Thank you so much, David. Thank you for all the time. Okay, item number 23. Discuss, approve, disapprove, easement and funding agreement for the Corners County Courthouse renovation project phase 1B with the Texas Historical Commission. Jeff?
The, with respect to this agenda item, we're talking specifically about the easement and funding agreement, which we discussed previously. When I was here last, discussed that with y'all, we talked about the provisions and easement and the funding agreement. A question was raised as far as the existing jail on the site, on the property where the courthouse is. We had decided to get it into Texas Historical Commission to see if we could get approval to demolish that building. We sent a letter to the commission, we received a response this week, it indicates we will be allowed to demolish that building. The letter, which I received yesterday, I think should be in your packet for today. What the commission has said to us is that they recognize the county's desire to demolish the existing jail, and they intend to allow us to do that. Their goal, as stated in the letter, is to restore the property where the courthouse is to as close to its original condition as it was in 1895 when the building was constructed. What we do need to do with respect to the jail, according to the letter, is to submit an application for a demolition permit because the, because the site is on the property where the courthouse is. Don't need to issue a specific permit for that, but the letter says they intend to give us that. So, at this point, given our previous discussion and where we are now, it would seem that the only outstanding question as far as that funding agreement easement has been answered, we will be allowed to demolish the jail, and so now the commission is going to need to pay action on whether to approve the easement and the funding agreement. And if you have any further questions that I didn't answer, we might even re-discuss from last one last deal.
Certain example, we're tearing down that building, right? We get everything on our Dexter Road, we're tearing down that building, right? Or it's gonna be the concrete, I don't know, the concrete is, you know, your feet, maybe 2 or 3 foot deep, I'm not very sure. No, 'cause the footing is, I wonder, maybe 22, 32 inches. What if they tap into an old sidewalk, something historic, or does that shut it down completely, or do we keep on the process?
Now, your demolition permit will address the scope of the demolition, but right now, everything that is at location based on the site plan that we've submitted to the court, to the commission, everything is on the location with the jail is, will be allowed to be demolished. The only thing that's, that's historic and would need to be preserved under the easement and the funding agreement is the courthouse itself. So, your obligation with respect to not altering the condition of the property is right now gonna be limited to the courthouse. Once you get the demolition permit, you'll be allowed to demolish the jail and then preserve everything else.
Okay, the reason I was asking was about 8, 10, 11 years ago, I can remember, 12 years ago, it was mentioned about the jail to tear it down, and I can't remember, somebody had mentioned that we poke around there and find something else historical, it'll shut that project down, it won't, we can tear it down once we start.
Well, right, yeah, right now the jail has been designated as a historically significant building.
I understand, but I mean, if it was built over something else that we're not aware of, it'd be tapped into it or something.
Well, I mean, if it was built over something like an, like an ancient...
Old sidewalks or something like that.
Old sidewalks are fine, if you're talking about an archaeological site, it's different.
I know, no, I'm not talking about that.
But yeah, old sidewalks, anything that's, anything that's associated with the patch to or...
To the core, if it could be tore down.
To the jet, when it's torn down, yeah.
Okay. So... All right, I'll discuss this with Jeff, and that's what I heard, since it doesn't say exactly that it can, we have to apply for the permit, which Jeff's explained that he doesn't have it properly, therefore I'll take it, we approved item number 22.
I second it.
But they second it, all bayers say aye. Aye, any opposed? None, motion passes. You have, you didn't have something to sign on that?
Yeah, I've got the original documents that we need to sign, we need to, the only thing we need to do with the documents is Fisher Heck Architects prepare a revised site plan that has the note, the original easement that said existing jail to remain, that 2 remains been removed, so I need to put that exhibit with the documents once that's compiled and ready to give, and I've got them all right here.
All right, item number 24. Discuss, approve, disapprove, disapproval. I'm sorry, sure.
Demolishing that for the jail, is the tower included in there? Cause I don't have it.
The tower, you see them towers?
If the tower, yeah, the tower's attached or adjacent to the jail, that, that particular structure comes down. But that'll be part of the demolition permit, detailing to the commission what we're going to be demolishing, and that'll be approved, but if it's attached or associated with the jail, it can go, if it's attached to or associated with the courthouse, it has to stay.
John, are y'all gonna move the tower to the new facility?
No, sir, then towers.
There's a new jail, you know, everybody can do it this time.
Oh, I'm like, okay, but you'll have a new town.
Yes, sir.
Part of the consideration in the letter with the commission was that we have a new jail coming online, so all of the services provided at the old jail will not be necessary, and that's one of the motivating factors in allowing us to tear it down, so the towers included.
Thank you. Item number 24. Discuss, approve, disapprove, disapproval, submission of rankings of contractors for construction of the Corners County Courthouse renovation project phase 1B and award of the contract with the MJ Board General Contractor. Jeff?
I'm gonna ask that we pass on this agenda item, we weren't able to get a final bid for 41 pricing, as of yesterday afternoon, he's waiting on some folks who were having the office yesterday today, we'll put that back on the agenda the next week.
We'll take no action on item number 24. Going to item number 25. Discuss, approve, disapprove, the design services contract with Fisher Heck Architects for the design and construction of the Corners County Courthouse renovation project phase 2. Jeff?
This is for the next phase of the courthouse project that we discussed, last one was here as far as the additional grant would be seeking. In order to do that, we need to, you know, begin the design phase with Fisher Heck. Louis Fisher is here today to answer the questions you might have regarding his services, but to update the court, originally, the court was presented with a contract for Fisher Heck Services just to bring the project to the completion of the design phase, did not include the construction phase. I addressed the court at a previous meeting, we discussed the intent of the court to modify the proposed contract agreement with Fisher Heck to include construction phase services once we received our permit and our funding, hopefully receiving the funding from another grant from the commission. So what I did was I went back and worked with Mr. Fisher, we negotiated the terms of the contract, which is an architectural AIA contract, D101 for design services. That contract has been reviewed by myself and by Fisher Heck, and we've published an agreement as to the terms. It includes all of the construction phase services in addition to the design phase services that were previously discussed, I believe when Judge Butler reached out to Fisher Heck at the time, and it is now before you in your package for approval. There are a few lines that need to be filled into the contract, the court's ready for signature, but it's in a, it's in a state right now where it's ready to be approved and subject to that approval that can be signed next again, so that the phase 2 design will be again. You'll notice that the payment schedule has been modified from the original version that you received to reflect additional home services and construction phase services, and also an increased number has been put into the agreement for the construction phase services, so that the total compensation will reflect both the design phase and construction phase work. One question that was raised last meeting, if we don't get the grant, when we don't decide to go forward with construction, will Fisher Heck get those fees? I think part of the discussion at the last meeting was that the county is committed to doing the work, to receive funding authority to do the work for financing, if it doesn't get a grant, come to the Texas Historical Commission. So, I did put a provision in the contract that would, that would automatically prevent that construction phase after they are funded, because I believe that's the intent of the court and the county to go forward to the end of the actual completion of the project. However, like I said, Mr. Fisher's here, if that's an issue, we could address that by change order at the time, the agreement does allow modification by written agreement, and if something were to happen where the project would not go beyond the design phase, we can address that.
Could I ask a question? You're standing already? We only have, oh, $4 million, $4 million, the bomb is only $4 million. That's not, that's not the figure that we have for the total construction, so that's not the whole.
That would be a blazing question, man, which would have to be addressed later on if we don't get the grant from the commission. There's not an action on the table on this agenda item to approve the final construction, that's something that will happen in the future. Right now, the only item on the agenda is to approve this contract, and we are addressing the intent of the contract. If that intent needs to change based on budgeting and financial concerns later on, what I'm saying now is that we can address those modifications by written change order or termination later if needed. At this point, the county's not committing to spending any money other than what's called for in this contract.
Which is just for design services?
Well, it covers construction phase services too, but it's paid for, as you can see in the agreement, it's paid for based on a percentage completion schedule. So as each phase gets completed, whether it be the schematic phase or the design phase or the construction document phase, into the construction services, Fisher Heck receives a percentage of the overall basics, basic services agreement or amount in the contract, and you'll see there's, I believe it's 42% during the construction phase. So, if we never get to the construction phase, that 42% will not have been earned, and we can address the issue with Fisher Heck at the time. That's, that's some, that's some months down, down the road.
Why don't we address it now?
Because right now, our intent is to go forward with projects.
I know, but we've seen all go from 100 to 40. I know, but we've seen all go from a hundred to forty, and anticipation, it could go to twenty, I mean, it would seem like we would want to cover our position right now while we're negotiating with Mr. Fisher.
Well, like I said, the contract allows for modification, and if the county chooses not to go forward with the project, the county has the right to terminate the agreements, at which point, time, money for underperforming services will not be done, if termination takes effect.
Go ahead.
Just one question. Contract with Ms. Fisher, we'll make some assumptions that the funding is there from the state, and that's a bunch from us, and whatever the contracts we go through, is his contract of call from day one to start to day end completion, and, and in a constant mode, so that we're not going through this Phase One, Phase Two, Phase One A and Two B, and get this thing done.
Yes.
But this building is gonna fall down on its own accord if we don't get it done.
This, this contract anticipates going to the very end of the renovation project, or the restoration project. It, it, the Phase One B is the, is the completion of the roof, that's what's gonna be, that number will be signed hopefully on the tenth. Once that's done, the, the next and last phase will be, it's called Phase Two, and it will address all remaining work to the exterior and the interior courthouse to bring it back to its condition fully restored, uh, per the historical permissions granted of the, uh, the project specifications of the design by Fisher Heck.
Guys, we were, we were, we were, all right here? It's on the table, do I hear a motion? No, wait, wait a minute, I have two questions to ask here. I've glanced through this, uh, and, uh, I see the percentages in here on page, uh-
Sixteen.
Page, uh, fifteen, I think, it says something there, says compensation, three hundred ninety-four thousand dollars, and then further pages down there, I saw, for, for, then with THC, you know, application grant, it says twelve thousand five hundred, fifteen thousand. Mr. Fisher, is that your charges, is that your, what you expect to bill us, those amounts?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we had nine percent complete plans before, this is in addition to what we paid you for your nine percent bid plans, is that correct?
Correct. What I did in preparing the fee is I estimated the cost of construction first. Uh, I took our original amount of two thousand and ten, uh, I'll give you round the figures, of approximately eight million dollars, then I inflated it for the last, uh, few years up to nine point two million dollars. Then I subtracted out, uh, three million, four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, which was my estimation of the amount of work that has already been done on the courthouse. So that work is done, so I'm not, I'm not reducing the cost of the overall project down to approximately five million, eight hundred and seven thousand dollars. And then I applied our fee to that of twelve percent. Then, on the design phases, I know that we want to make this your courthouse, not a courthouse that was designed for any past years, so the design phase would include some time for us to meet and discuss and make sure that the plans are what y'all want. So I've taken, um, the design, there are actually two design phases, schematic design and design development, and those are usually thirty-five percent of the overall cost. I discounted those, uh, services by seventy-five percent. So the design phase is, is going to be only twenty-five percent of what is normally charged. Then I've taken the construction documents phase, which is usually thirty-five percent of the overall cost, and I've just discounted that by fifty percent. Then, we're going forward with the bidding negotiation phase, we've never done that before, except on the, on the, you know, the one project that I was involved with, and so we're putting in the, the regular fee there, five percent of the overall, uh, fee. And then we're putting in the normal twenty percent on the cost of the project for the construction phase. And so when you add up all of the discounted and normal fees, it, it comes up to the fee that we're presenting here today, plus it includes an amount for me to prepare the grant with the county, uh, that amount is fifteen thousand dollars, and reimbursable expenses such as travel. And so that's how I came up with the total fee today. But I'm trying to, uh, provide discounts for work previously done.
I'm not finding any hard figures in my, can you, somebody tell me what page those numbers are on?
They're nine to four thousand, I don't know if I've taken fifteen, fifteen or sixteen or something.
When I was here a few months back, um, we approved through the, um, design, I'm sorry, um, through the design, construction documents phase of approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So on top of that, I've added approximately thirty-five thousand dollars for the bidding and negotiation phase, which is about a two to three month project, and then I've added one hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, uh, which is, uh, services for the fifteen to eighteen months when the construction is going on. So that's how we got up from two hundred and fifty back up to, uh, what is it, three hundred and ninety?
You probably mentioned this, and I'm, first of all, I'm new here, but how much has the county paid you to date, or services more or less?
We're gonna have to be exact. Do you have those, the, the, today? I, it's-
A lot of the year calls?
I know, let's see, on the, on the first project, which was around six hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred thousand, I think we received about seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars.
What, what I was saying is toward, obviously, is what the total cost was going to be for architectural, construction services by the time we get finished.
Yes. Um, for a restoration project, it's usually a higher percentage than, uh, is with a standard construction project, especially because of coordination with the state and the specific details and all the coordination. The Texas State Commission on their grant applications allows up to fifteen percent to be charged back to THC, and these are architectural services are one of the things that can be reimbursed by the state, uh, if we receive the grant money. It's, it's, they approve some, uh, expense.
Okay, let me, let me run this from a different direction, I understood a while ago, when the courthouse is completed, the estimated total cost would be nine point two million, is that the figure I heard, or was I?
I, I think that's pretty much.
Okay, well, let me say this, when we get finished, well, we have paid it to more than nine hundred thousand, and not talking about reimbursable expense, because I understand that's outside.
I didn't refigure it that way, sir.
We've had, we've had two architects involved too, he hasn't worked on it the whole time. Graham Lou was involved with the foundation work and the roof, so he is, is not getting involved the whole time.
I, I'm not, you know, I'm not an opponent, I'm not, and associate, but what I'm concerned about is that we don't wind up duplicating work, and are we gonna wind up, uh, I would think that we, right, this size, even with the texture stuff that you mentioned, you have to do with the state, and it should have come in somewhere in your normal fee range in terms of total percentages, and that's where I was getting toward, see what we're looking at in the whole picture.
I just have a question for Jeff, if you were going through these, through these figures and percentages, does that sound normal?
The percentages, yeah, percentages that are being stated, uh, do sound normal to And let me just address one more thing, just so I can call your attention to what I was talking about earlier. Uh, Article Nine of the contract, on the bottom of page fourteen, on top of page fifteen, is where we have the owner's right to terminate the agreement if the project doesn't go forward, and it states in there that if we terminate through no fault of the architect, which essentially is a termination for convenience, for lack of funding, or whatever other reason we might want to call upon, the architect is compensated for the service, for services performed prior to termination, as well as any reimburseables that are then due, but no further, no further fees would be owed, so we're not committing ourselves to paying the three hundred ninety-four thousand, regardless of what happens. Obviously, what happens dictates whether the services are performed or whether they're hurt, so.
There's nothing back on us to be terminated?
Yeah, correct. Financially, you would pay for the services that it-
Because you said quite a lot of that's on-
Right, you wouldn't have damages owed for-
We have to pay for that. If I recall right, it said we do responsible for twenty-two percent of the logistics of the design phase and don't get grant, is that it?
The percentages in the contract are on page sixteen, what I said was the construction phase services are compensated at forty-two percent, so you'd be responsible for fifty-eight percent if we go all the way through bidding the contract. Now, bidding phase is eight percent, so if we stop before the bidding, if we go through the completion of the construction document phase, we then submit those construction documents to the historical commission for approval of additional funding and additional grants, and for some reason it's not granted, and we're, we choose not to go forward at that time, then fifty percent of the architectural contracts was not actually performed, in which case we would terminate and not owe that. So it's really fifty percent, because you gotta, yeah, you're not gonna go through the bidding phase until you have the grant approval, or you have the, certainly the grant approval, you know, you could do it concurrently, but that's, that's eight percent right there.
It's still on the table, guys, do I hear a motion?
Pete, you've been messing with it, excuse me, Pete, you've been looking at all of this, uh, it's your fault.
All right. I'll make a motion if we approve. Item number twenty-five, section-
It's been read, second. David seconded, all the papers say aye. Aye, any opposed? None, motion passes.
Item number twenty-six, discuss approved, disapproved, change order for additional architectural services and other associated expenses due to the extension of time for completion of Carls County Jail project, Jeff.
Okay, so, uh, shifting gears, we, we discussed a little bit earlier, I mean, about the, um, cost to be reimbursed for, from the contractor of the jail project for delays. What's happened is, the project is delayed, um, we have an agreement with Lorraine Daley and her firm to provide, to pay her for additional services, uh, for construction phase services until, um, substantial completion, as defined by the original contracts. That day has come and gone, yet we still need the architect out there monitoring the project and being our project representative, so previous, uh, change orders to the architectural agreement have, uh, been signed and reimbursed by HMC. Notably, there was a forty-five day delay last year due to the concrete material issues. We got forty-six thousand dollars from HMC as a credit to the contract to reimburse the county for the additional fees that were incurred by Daley Spear Architects, um, in performing the, the services associated with that forty-five day delay. That delay period carried the projected substantial completion date into December of two thousand and fourteen. As you know, now we're looking at a projection completion of March or April, so what we, um, what we're asking the court to consider by this agenda item is to approve the extension of the architectural services, uh, by change order on a monthly basis, not that we come back every month, but that the court approves seventeen thousand, is it one oh six, Lorraine? Seventeen one oh six?
No, seventeen or three oh six.
Seven, like seventeen thousand, three oh six, I think is the amount, of what her monthly charge is for performing construction phase services while the project is ongoing but delayed. So what we would ask for is approval for the county to enter into a change order and pay Lorraine's firm the additional seventy thousand dollars per month until the work is completed. If it completes March fifteenth, it'll be appropriated to March fifteenth, if it's April fifteenth, or whatever it is, it's, it's, uh, approval to the end of the job. What we're then going to do, and I've actually drafted the man letter to HMC this morning, uh, informing them, presuming that this gets approved, informing them of this decision, and reminding them of this provision in the contract, which specifically states, the contractor reverses the county for any additional architectural fees incurred by the county as a result of delays in the job. So, just like we'll go back to HMC during the closeout phase and assess liquid advantages to pay for the additional costs for housing inmates, we will also go back and, using that provision, and using their prior agreement for the forty-six thousand dollar credit for the previous delay period, uh, negotiate for reimbursement of whatever total fees we pay to David Spear are for the timeframe from December through completion as the, um, the additional services. So that's the plan, and what we need from the court is the consideration of that plan and not to approve or disapprove of any final negotiation with the contractor, but simply to approve, if you so choose, to pay the architect for additional services based on that monthly price going forward from, from when the last substantial completion date expired in December to whatever day is of the actual substantial completion.
Is the contractor financially strong enough to where, when all of these bills come due, they're going to be able to pay them? Speaking of, of the, um, additional architectural services, the things that the sheriff's department has for them, all of these things, are they, are they substantial enough or bonded well enough to do it?
Yes, by all appearances, they are, um, they're a fairly large company, I don't know what their end of volume is, I can find that out, but they do have a lot of ongoing projects that are also fully bonded, both performance bonds and payment bonds on this project, so the non-payment notices that people are hearing about from subs and suppliers of jobs, those are being referred to their bonding company. We have a personal commitment from their president, who came and met with us about two weeks ago, a week and a half ago, that he will personally ensure that all the funding gets taken care of, and if we don't want to take him at his word, which we shouldn't, um, we have retainage that is more than sufficient to cover the costs for these reimbursable amounts that we're seeking, and the county's fully insulated for these costs, certainly, uh, because the retainage is five percent, and we're looking at four hundred and, what's the-
Currently, four hundred and eight thousand.
Four hundred and eight thousand retained right now, so we've got plenty of money that we're holding on to.
Oh, that is, okay.
Yeah, that we can use to get this back charged.
Well, that's what I was concerned.
Yep.
And, and it's your opinion that this is something we should go forward with?
I, I think it makes sense, you need to have an architect monitoring the project, it's, it's, you don't wanna, you don't wanna not fund this essentially.
I understand. I understand.
In the contract, as I said, when we signed the multi-gravity contract, we anticipated this occurring, and therefore the contract has language that specifically allows us to get this money back.
And if we believe in U.S. attorney, we should take your word to all.
I would say yes.
I move with this subject.
My second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All the favors say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion passed. Item number twenty-seven. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-seven. Acknowledged that Sarah is having an opportunity for residents of Karnes County to dispose of household hazardous materials on March 28, 2015, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Karnes County Showroom.
This is Daniel Hupp. Hazardous household cleanup that we allow residents in the county to bring tires and paint and set exercise, whatever they got, computer parts and stuff. It's a Sarah grant, and Marathon also helped us buy across today.
That was an acknowledgement, Sheldon. Item number twenty-eight. November, December treasure report authored by Viner Black.
What?
How are you doing, man?
We'll do the November report first. This is the third time it's been on the agenda for approval, so everything is current. Yes, yes.
So the balance says of November 14 is 36 million, 656,969 dollars and eighty-five cents.
You've been up to the last page?
I'm on the last page. I'm on the page that says your order is approved in monthly reports.
Oh, yes, sir. And that includes the juvenile funds also. There was one note on Roman Bridge Special, and I believe Lwana brought this up in her report that she had done back in December. The interest for the Roman Bridge Special, $7.50, was not included in November. I failed to give Michelle a check to post that, so that was corrected in December's report.
This is a lot to absorb quickly. Have all of the accounts been reconciled or?
Per November, yes, sir.
For November?
Yes, sir. So today, I'm just asking that you approve the November report, but not the December report. I am still working with Tyler Technology on the bank management reconciliation. Lwana and I worked yesterday on trying to figure out what we should. The report that I originally ran for December was not coming up with the same balance, ending balance for November, beginning balance for December, and Lwana's help, I was able to print the correct report to do that. So I'm still working on December, so I do not want December's approved, I want just November's approved. December just has an idea of what the new reports will look like, and it's very long, as you can see compared to what the previous reports were. The previous, I'm sorry, the previous reports were eight pages. The current report is going to be twenty-eight. And there's a way to run a report, where you strictly get the summary, and I believe that what Lwana's been presenting to you is just the summary report, but the other report that I have gives you everything like payroll, money that was received and what was expensed too, so it's a little bit more detailed. So if it's too much, tell me if we can change it. If it's perfect, we can keep it, except this is what the new report will look like. Twenty-eight pages compared to eight before.
So how all this matches with everything that Jeff?
I have not seen her November report, I do not know.
The one he gave us for December, the new?
In November.
Well, you know, the new, what it's going to look like.
Yes.
You know, you've got the difference, any, what is AP, AP fund?
Account statement.
Okay. On the very last, about number eight, I can show mine's $37. Anyway, but the report total ending balance is 36, 36 million, 656,9285. But yet the other, the $37 was, if you didn't take that out, it would balance with your number here, right?
I have not had that much chance worked with the December report, no.
Are, excuse me, are your labor costs all in order and balancing? I'm talking about the payroll expenses that they update in good order? And that's kind of an open question you can answer, however you want to, is everything in order on payroll, apartment, everything balances, department to department, that sort of thing?
Yes. Whenever we run a payroll report, it spits out, it produces a report of how much money we need to move from the payroll account to the, or from each fund to the payroll account to reimburse, is that what you're asking for? Yes, yes.
Like these right here, I'm sure I've been here long enough to know everything, but they go through the magnitude before the end of the month?
Well, she uses, her printout is the same as mine.
And you said you don't have this one?
I'm not sure she's made any changes since November. I have not seen any confirmation that bank reconciliations match the report, that everything balances out.
I've never given to her before, so.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. All right, no problem.
That's not our problem sitting down with her and doing that. I don't have to sit down.
Maybe I got confused the last time we were talking.
You said the email, you said the, you had problems with Tyler Technology, you had to call the tech support girl, I talked to, told me I didn't have access to a lot of features. Cashier decided that she would need to get project manager to call, give her permission with the tech, and I may have access. Why wouldn't that?
I don't know.
Did y'all not search that up?
Lwana was the project manager, I don't know. I didn't have any contact with John Todd.
I did not have anything to do with who was set up with access. That was something done by Tyler, but according to the email, VICE report email, as far as it was GL numbers not in the system, it was not general ledger numbers not in the system, it was product codes not in the system. All GL numbers converted from Ableton to N-code version ten, because I checked them all individually, made sure the numbers transferred. If there was a change, we have an updated chart of accounts, plus we also made sure that all the amounts associated with each general ledger line item transfer.
Even when I put the new product code in, that there was numbers that were not, I had to associate them with that product code, and I couldn't do that because I didn't have access to it.
Did you ever get the payroll issue clarified? I think, what you'll have is something with payroll also.
I'm not sure what you're referring to. Payroll been done.
I mean, but I thought there was a problem with payroll not balancing out stuff like that or something.
I'm not sure what's required from yourself.
Have you heard from the girl yet?
I have interviews today.
So back to David's question on the bank statements.
For November.
Okay, what about the ones prior? Any of those been?
They're all done.
They're all balanced?
Yes.
On the table, guys. Remember what I did.
And strictly November is what I'm asking for, not December.
Just like all the rest of them, I'll accept the report. I can't prove it, I can't go through and verify it right now. I don't know what we're supposed to do, except that she gave the report, so she can.
Can't hear you, Pete. Just speak to the microphone.
I said I can accept the report, I can't approve it, I can't go through and verify all this at this time. It's up to the law. I can accept it.
Doesn't have to go through you first? Do you have to accept it first?
Well, I have to prove that it's correct.
You have to verify it's correct.
The report is my report. The printout is the same, they're the same.
But if y'all remember correctly, when I presented November, I said I cannot confirm these numbers in the system.
And again, I'm not the only person that makes changes to that system. All I do is receive. So if there's any type of journal entries that are made, just like the September journal entries that were made, I was not made aware of those until after the fact. I knew there was going to be some made, done, I didn't know till September bank statements that there was something being made here, so. I'm not the only person that has control over that, the journal entry.
You could have confirmed the numbers, the current, meaning there, you couldn't find everything that was in her report.
I have not been privileged to, her bank reconciliation, to see if it make, what she shows is outstanding, makes the bank balance equal what the system shows.
And all she has to do is ask for a meeting, we'll sit down together, and I don't follow that.
You should just present them to me, I shouldn't have to sit down.
I don't know why we can't just sit down together and talk about them, I'm with the big deal.
There's no need to talk about it.
Well, also, we just accept the report as presented, do we get a final check in balance or we should?
All right, seconded.
That's fine. Just November, not December.
It's been made and seconded to accept the report for November, not the December.
Correct.
All the favors say aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? None.
I think, I would like to encourage
Thank you, Bill.
the treasurer and the auditor to have their, in their office conference, so we can look at figures that we are sure that are correct and in balance, and we don't have to go through this gyration every month.
Item number twenty-nine. Karnes County auditor's report for December 2014.
Thank you.
You don't, I don't do anything with mine, it just gets about the limits. There's a little more information in this report than normal, so I'll go through page by page. First page covers, next one, I have items of interest. Cash and investments are reflected on page two and three as in the financial system. This is how they will print out new, in our new financial system. As Viner mentioned, there is a summary or a detailed report. I provided just the summary report. You'll notice the second column on the second page, the ending balance is 38,251,456.80. I also went through and made a summary of bank accounts and outside investments and certificates on deposit. Those totals are 40,278,75.77. So there is a difference between what the system shows and what the bank shows of 2 million, 26,618.97. There are probably several outstanding checks and outstanding deposits, but again, you notice the bank shows more money than our financial system does, over $2 million more. I'm thinking there may possibly be some items that have not been received as in the past. The cash and investments at Falls City National Bank and outside investments, those are summarized on pages four through eight. The total monies in Falls City National Bank as of December 31st were 6,309,641.97. The asterisk after that number, you'll notice that includes Karnes Wilson Gemini probation funds of 212,414.84. The total monies invested with outside investors, which are DWS, Scudder, Stone Castle, and Texas Class as of December 31st, is 33,968,433.80, per the statements that they provide. Again, the total cash investments as of December 31st, per the financial institutions, You go to page four through seven, I gave you the individual accounts that we have at Falls City National Bank, and the bomber amounts per their balances as of December 31st, and also certificates of deposit for particular accounts at Karnes County National Bank, excuse me, Falls City National Bank. Again, the total of those accounts, including Gemini probation, are 6,309,641.97. The next page, which is a portrait page or a vertical page rather than horizontal, is the statement balances for the outside investments as of December 31st. I put Karnes County National. It's Karnes County's general fund and each of the funds. Each of those investments through DWS, Scudder, are 7,158,252.96 invested at Stone Castle, and the individual accounts are listed, 26,506,427.80, and at Texas Class, 303,753.40. The total outside investments, 33,968,433.80. The next page is the outstanding debt requirements of the county for fiscal year 15. You have a eagle-sized page that's a tabulation of sales tax revenues that the county has received from 1988 through January of 2015. It's very interesting to review those and see how things have changed. For instance, in May of '88, the county received 18,467.76 in sales tax. In May of 2014, the county received 837,731.40. Needless to say, our sales tax receipts are a great benefit to the taxpayers of the county.
Sure, Kelly, we forgot here in the house in town.
Sure, we can. I have provided y'all with copies of the statements from the outside investments, so that you will see the numbers that I have previously reported. As Viner pointed out earlier on her December report, there are some receiving errors. In addition to those, I have identified others that are included in my report. These receiving problems are not issues of the conversions. These type of receiving errors or omissions occur frequently, regardless if it was the old system or the new system. For instance, our interest earned on CDs from Falls City National Bank, they matured on December 19th, 2014, the total interest earned was 362.56. Viner reinvested those CDs, she just rolled them over, but yet the interest income is not entered into the system. There's several additional receipt errors that I identified yesterday as far as interest income and investments. Some she received in two certificates of deposit line item rather than to the cash line item, so therefore your cash line item is going to be off by those amounts. There's a detailed report that at the top, it says Fund 200 Roman Bridge. There's two entries there, which were tax collections. One is a negative 25,154.09, the other is a positive 25,154.09. It appears as if It appears as if the revenue line item was used rather than cash when the funds were deposited or received in the system. Those monies should also be in the cash account, so therefore that cash account will also have errors in it. I have presented previous memos to the treasurer's department, and I just included a few of them in this report, just so y'all know some problems that are going on as far as monies and reports. Quarterly reports are due January 31st, April 30th, July 31st, and September 30th. The policy currently in effect is I receive those reports by the 20th of the month before they're due, due to the fact that I also co-sign on all checks paying those fees to the different entities, so therefore I need to review them for accuracy. A recent example this week was our unemployment fund report to Texas Association of Counties. I had identified in the last few payrolls that the contribution per payroll was erroneous. Not only was the amount erroneous, the percentage amount erroneous, but it was also being calculated on the wrong wages. It was being calculated on cafeteria wages, not on gross wages. When I got the report on Monday, the 26th, I reviewed it and I called Bob Buckholz, our representative at TACT for this fund, and he said he had received the report on the 23rd via fax, so that means the report got submitted before I even got to review it, and there were errors on the report. Vi talked to him since, and he said, just correct it from here on out. Don't worry about going back and correcting the erroneous ones. We've had several instances of deduction issues in payroll since the conversion change. I've had to take numerous hours checking payroll due to the conversion. There have always been several items identified that to date still have not been addressed. For instance, on myself, and I gave y'all a copy of the memo to Elaine, I participate voluntary life insurance. The correct premiums have not been deducted from my paycheck and they are still in arrears, and I do not know what the plan is on when to catch those up, so they are correct. We go back into November with some issues that deal with checks. My November 17th memo said there were general fund checks issued in February 2014 to move the December 13 collections from the general fund to the applicable fund. That would be general records management, county and district clerk funds, management funds, courthouse security tech fee, justice court billing fees. All those checks were received in the system in January, in February 2014, but then on February 21st, the above referenced receipt and checks were deleted, voided. The notation written on each check was already sent in November, in December. I cannot locate a previous or post receipt or check for the December collections, so it leads me to believe that those monies are still in the general fund and not been moved. We have had some duplicate contributions of health insurance back in November made on a particular employee that switched from one department to another. We've had overpayment of health insurance premiums by, and dental insurance premiums by retirees that have not been refunded to the retirees. We have not received reimbursement to the general fund from the other funds for our September 30th quarter and unemployment contributions. How that works is the general fund always pays that in one check to TACT, and then the eventual funds reimburse general funds, so those reimbursements haven't been done. There's a lot of items that remain issues as far as the reporting system. As the auditor, I have the authority to determine time and manner of reports submitted to me. I require anything that requires disbursement of county funds to be submitted to me for review to determine accuracy of those dispersments. I must approve each disbursement. I am a countersigner on all the checks. As I gave the example earlier of the unemployment fund issue, we've got several items that are not being handled in a correct manner. I don't know if y'all are aware, with the payroll conversion, we've had numerous issues that need to be addressed, and several of the last payrolls went to the bank direct deposit without authorization and completion of the review by me. Vi accuses me of nitpicking. I am not nitpicking. I'm doing my job. In fact, she says it is my job to find errors. I find plenty. I confirm activity and identify errors for correction, but I must be allowed adequate time to do such. Everyone should strive to complete all duties of their job, whether it's statutory or assumed, entirely and with accuracy, and not be of the opinion, don't notify us if there are omissions or errors. Take pride in your job and do it right the first time.
That's an auditor's report.
Okay, now I'm going to have to defend myself here apparently. Going back to the unemployment one.
No, sir.
Day one, that has been based on the cafeteria claims, when I went through the Tyler technology, we went back to payroll in September, and it was done that way for quite a while on that one. So basically what we do is we take the salary and figure out what the rate should be, and then we pay it. That was my fault. I thought I had put it on the wanted list, and I did not on that one. The state criminal and civil fees, I didn't get the county clerk's report for November and December until Thursday of last week. So I can't give her something that's incomplete if other people don't give me what I need to finish my job. Nitpicking would be, why in the world would you need a check whether or not somebody's social security numbers on the beneficiary paid in order to approve payment? That can be done afterwards.
That should be done when the employee completes their half.
Right, and not everybody knows their dependent social security numbers. So if she wants more time, we gave that to her Tuesday afternoon at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, or 3 o'clock in the afternoon to approve payroll. I don't know how much more time we need to get her, unless we start payroll today for payroll due next week. So there are some things that are out of my control, there are some things that are in my control, but it goes both ways. I've asked for these with auditor over the bank statements, I'll get them. I've asked for extra time. Remember, from September 12th to November 5th, I was by myself. By myself. We are behind on some things, I know that. We're trying to keep up, and that's why I'm having to hire extra people to help me do my job. So if I'm nitpicking, I'm sorry, but that's the way I am. I take pride in my job. I may not do the perfect job, but I do my job.
Item number 30. Of the one of these issues that you present to, these issues that you present to the court, is there a timeline to get these corrected?
I have a time, I'll correct them.
Again, do we start a timeline?
There has not been a deadline. They should be corrected, and for instance, each payroll, I identify errors that may not necessarily affect the person's paycheck, but it may affect the county side of contributions, et cetera, and those have yet to be corrected.
And again, we're dealing with on the insurance, we are trying to catch up. I did the best I could, get payroll out when it come in there, insurance premiums weren't done correctly. I paid our weapons done. There was also errors on Jess Williams' part, on the dental part. They gave us one rate, we traded that rate, then they found out, noticed a different rate. I'm sorry, I'm Cuban, I'll make mistakes.
I said pay me the bills.
Okay. I will point out some items of interest if you will go to page number nine. Actually, move back to page number eight. We are paying our liability insurance, our public officials' insurance, our district judges' endorsement coverage insurance, our law enforcement liability, and our auto liability and physical damage insurance in this cycle. The total annual premiums are $86,028. Note that this does not include workers' comp. We do workers' comp on quarterly remittances.
What page do you want?
Page eight.
Eight, nine, and 10. The back three pages, the summary pages. The liability insurance is about in the middle of the page, $5,613. Public officials' liability insurance is $24,266. The district judge's endorsement is about a third of the page from the bottom, is $661. On page nine, you have the law enforcement liability, almost in the middle of the page, Two thirds of the way down, the auto liability portions and physical damage that is attributable to the sheriff's department is $18,547. On page 10, almost in the middle of the page, is the liability insurance and physical damage on Roden Bridge equipment. That's $10,499. On page nine, out of our capital outlay expenditures, on the communication tower for the jail in this cycle is bills for $88,415.33. For the jail facility, $719,307.1. On page 10, road materials, the expenditure in this cycle is $1,052,652.21. The total for this cycle is $2163,226.36.
All right, this system is much easier. I noticed that in comparing this with last month's, the fourth was number five.
Page three.
Court has been?
Yes.
Okay, you have utility bills, courthouse, road bridge, juvenile, $1,716,210, that's quite a department. But the last month's, you only had 210, you didn't have juvenile utility, I mean, you didn't have courthouse, road bridge, juvenile. You didn't get electric bill last month for them?
Yes, we get electric bills, it's just the timing, whether it be in the first cycle or the second cycle of the month. And as far as that description on there, even though it says Roden Bridge and juvenile in that description, the bill comes as one, but we break it down by departments to meet the budget on how utilities are budgeted.
When you line it together, why don't you?
It does. You go on page seven, which is road bridge expenditures, direct energy business, utility bills, $578.88 is applicable to Roden Bridge's facility.
So is that for, oh, that's the amount?
No. No, that amount plus the $1,760.56 that you spoke of, as well as the amount under Department 465 for juvenile probation, utilities in the amount of $314.91. All those get added together, and that's the total electric bill. It is itemized out by department to meet the budget in this report, but they get totaled together and remitted as one check.
Oh, one on the first page, Alonso Barca, or what do you call it, says audit services for 10, 1, 12, 31, that's one. Put that on.
Alonso Barca, that was not audit services, that's accounting services that the legal firm from Austin hired for the case that her filed.
What's a camera service?
Yes.
Any further questions on this?
In most material, that includes water and everything, correct?
Yes, it does.
And we paid the bill.
It's been made?
I second the motion.
I second the audit, may I say aye?
Aye.
All right, any opposed, non-motion matters?
I sure look forward to getting this served.
All you'll have to do is come by the office. For instance, our next court date is the 10th. You come by on that Friday, I believe the schedule says after 4:00, you can pick up a copy.
You have to be ready on Friday, fine.
I'm not going to be there, but I'm on a Friday, although I have been.
Guy, you moving to number 31 to adjourn if you want to say anything that won't be adjourned? If they made a second, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion passed, we're adjourned. Thank you, David.